I wanted to comment on the item 12, and I can't say very well. If you allow me to do that, I'll probably...
Yeah, we can.
Okay. Well, I had spoken once before about why it's so important to not get back in the allowance of the commercial offer of the public. Particularly within city limits on I-40, I understand what you're doing tonight, some nonviolent version of that allowance on 177 and on I-40. Particularly, the conference protection has to try to regulate those outside the cities. But if you have an art supply house within the city, you're not going to get any of them, because they have to acknowledge the city's position. I think most people think that they're a bad idea, and I was just urging you not to go over tearing down the lot today to help with my work. The other thing is that, well, this was before the planning commission, but actually it's been three months. Commissioner Smith, the question came up as the one of this who was back alive or on the agenda, and he addressed the planning commission and mentioned that he had asked for it to be on the agenda because of a particular interest and it had, in my effect, property here. And it was very forthright, and I assume that the commission will do that also in the council meeting, so that how this evolved is as known as it was to the planning commission. And, uh, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Phil Hollins, and I know my priorities.
Thank you, Mr. Hollins.
Mayor, permission? I'm Doug Bromberg with Billboard After Advertising. My opinion of billboards is exactly the opposite of what you just heard. Billboards are vital to this economy, they're vital to the businesses. We should mention that there were plenty of billboards on I-40, there probably are. Those are regulated by ODOT, the spacing requirements are a thousand feet. But what's desperately needed in this town is billboards for businesses that are south of Parker, businesses that are south of Independence Street. Currently, in this city, there are over fifty-five buildings, commercial buildings, that are not being utilized, or even vacant for rent, or they're just there. These, these businesses, if they, if these buildings, if they were in use, if they were being utilized, they would create millions of dollars if a tax were given for the city and for this community. Businesses in that area especially need a boost of the army. There's no, there's nothing more unattractive than vacant buildings. There, there's, there's nothing more unattractive than a business district that looks like a sparrow. I urge everyone, not just the community leaders, but all Shawnee citizens, to get behind business and to, to give them the tools that they need to succeed. Billboards are an extremely affordable way of advertising, much more affordable than newspapers, much more affordable than periodicals. They are essential to local businesses, and local, local businesses can do business is essential to this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll move on to item number four, Mayor's Proclamation, Community Action Month, May 2012, and I think we have three people who accept it. Okay. The City of Shawnee Proclamation, Community Action Month. Whereas community action agencies were created with the Economic Opportunity Act of 1964, was signed into law, and whereas community action agencies have a forty-eight year history of promoting self-sufficiency for those with limited income, and whereas the Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency is a member of a nationwide network of eleven hundred community action agencies, and one of nineteen agencies in Oklahoma. Central Oklahoma Action Agency, I'm sorry, Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency serves six counties in Central Oklahoma, Cleveland, Lincoln, Kane, Logan, Potawatomi, and Seminole. And whereas the Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency continues to lead the effort to eradicate poverty by assisting families through a variety of programs and services that include transportation, prescription assistance, housing, utilities, assistance, senior programs, home weatherization, and many others. And whereas community action agencies help people and change lives, embody the spirit of hope and make Oklahoma and America a better place to live, work, and play. And whereas Shawnee joins the national efforts designated May, Community Action Month, to celebrate the success stories and honor the dedication of volunteers and the personal achievements of individuals who have benefited from the diverse programs of community action. Now therefore, I, Linda Peterson, Mayor of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2012 as Community Action Month in the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, dated the sixteenth day of April 2012. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And may I give you a copy of the newsletter?
Oh my goodness. Thank you, certainly. Okay, I'm here.
We'd appreciate if you have any questions, just don't hesitate to call us, because we're there to help.
If you want to sign up for the newsletter, to see everything that we do in the community, just drop a mail here or drop by the office, and we'll get you the mailing list.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, item number five, City Manager's Presentation of Employee of the Month to Melody Chancellor.
Commissioners, I have to do this to you, right? Another chancellor. She is the custodial staff for City Hall and Yance. I think you've been here two nights. If you remember this young lady, there are some really nice findings about City Hall and the break, and zero scary type stuff, but Oklahoma City could put out, and die in August or early. That was all this young lady. I also need to mention that her husband also works for the city in the Parks Department. But take nothing away from this young lady, she's doing a fantastic job, and we look forward to working with her many, many years in the future. I would be thankful very much, if you wanted to say something.
I just do it because it's just wonderful. I'll, I'll pay your, uh, dollars.
Thank you for a job well done. Item number six, Public Hearing and Considered Ordinance to Rezone Property Located at Thirty-Nine Forty, North Kippee Street, from R-1 Single Family Residential to C-3 Automotive, Commercial and Recreation. Case number P-06-12, Applicant Seminole Ice House LLC. And this was determined from the March nineteenth meeting. Did I already open the public hearing last time? Okay, so we are still in the public hearing portion for this ordinance. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this? We'll close the public hearing. Any questions? There's a lot of discussion about this at the planning commission. Oh, good, they accepted it. See, the planning commission had a lot of discussion about, you know, C-3 Automotive and transition zones and all that.
I don't think it had any conditions on recantation if we're trying to prove it, but we first have to, second.
All right, a motion by Commissioner here and a second by Commissioner Sims to approve the rezoning. Can I read the documents, please?
This is an ordinance for Shawnee zoning classification and following described property located within the core limits of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, to where it tracks the plan described as localized, blockaded, called to addition to Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, according to the reported plan to the rezoning said property from R-1 Single Family Residential to C-3 Automotive, Commercial, and Recreation, meaning the official zoning map of the City of Shawnee according to.
Follow all three. Sims?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Item number seven, Public Hearing and Considered Ordinance to Rezone Property Located at Forty-three Thousand East Magarther, from A-1 Agricultural to C-3 Automotive, Commercial, and Recreation. Case number P-08-12, Applicant Langley Management Company LLC, deferred by the planning commission to their meeting. Okay. Okay. Do we need to open the public hearing since it was deferred?
No, they're here to consider the rezoning.
So we need a motion to defer this. A motion by Commissioner here and a second by Commissioner Sims to defer this until our meeting after the planning commission's meeting on May second.
Prohibition made before night of the second. Prohibition made before night of the second.
Yes, sir. They have a workshop that's in the ride to, uh, their new codes this week, but they won't be taking any action.
You got it, someone?
Yes.
Follow all three. Here.
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Item number eight, Consider Approval of the Final Flat for Austin and Austin Located in the Thirty-eight Hundred Block of North Harrison on the West Side. Case number S-07-12, Applicant Landies Engineering LLC. This one had some conditions on it.
It would be approved with four conditions, as accepted by the planning.
Okay, a motion to approve by Commissioner Sims based with the addition of the four conditions established by the, and accepted by the planning commission.
Right.
And a second by Isaac and Sawyer. Anything else? Follow all three.
Sims?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Question, Karen, thank you.
Item number nine, Presentation of Shawnee Economic Development Foundation Annual Report and Funding Request by Tim Merg as SEDF Executive Director.
Thank you for allowing us to make our annual report and our funding request, because in the past we've tried to narrow down our comments from our presentation and from the annual report itself. Due to our first full year of funding, we've been able to take some new retail strategies and alignments to improve our retail attraction efforts. The data gathering and analysis portion of our work is being finalized and made in the patient portion of the program for us to meet with the higher target values as soon to take place. Of course, the goal is to increase shopping opportunities for the area residents and in turn, increase the sales tax collections for the city and for the county. Attracting new retailers is an extremely competitive process, and we elected to go as a consultant to help distinguish us from five hundred sixty-seven other metropolitan areas around the United States. One of our United States retail brokers recently told us that our accurate data demographic and information has moved us up on the list of communities that they look forward on to their prospects. We hope to hear more of that as we're fully engaged in the retail recruitment process. As you know, if we don't stay active in the process, we'll continuously additional retail leakage and lost sales tax revenues, which none of us wants to, whether we're dealing with. Wealth is generated from primary job creation in our community, and without wealth-paying jobs, our power can only suffer. Over eighty percent of all new jobs come from existing businesses that are in our community. We believe we should stay keenly focused on helping them expand and grow and create more jobs, and be willing to help them succeed. Currently, many of our larger employees are expanding, having a need for more skilled workers and other areas of support. A portion of what we do is help them expand and increase the awareness of the employment opportunities they have in this area. Added capital investments, primary jobs, wealth generators, wealth generators, is supply funding for all of us. If we'll protect and enhance these employers, we're helping ourselves and we're helping the region prosper. Our best offense in creating new jobs is a defense of existing companies. As they thrive, so do we, and that type of mentality is contagious among the other businesses that are situated in place to relocate. It's our intention to aggressively consume new aerospace-based and aviation attraction opportunities for this area. If approved by the SEDF Board of Directors, with the help of several local and regional state partners, we're planning to launch a new lower-tier aviation attraction project. Our proximity tanker, along with the recent improvements that the Shawnee Regional Airport and the available training with the Norton Cooper A and B Program, are of value to those we seem to entice to be in our community. Boeing has publicly stated that the cost of doing business in Oklahoma is forty-nine percent lower than other locations. We should capitalize on those facts and those lower costs of operations, and like the lower-tier companies around the United States know that they're close to the largest air logistics center in the United States or even in the world. Marketing and underutilized assets such as the Shawnee Regional Airport might be our best opportunity to grow higher-paid jobs for our community. By increasing our contact with our sites, electors, and developers, we're meeting with those critical decision-makers on a more regular basis. When we do that, we see an increase in the opportunity for more projects. In 2011, the SEDF had fifty-nine projects that had been solved or worked on. So far this year, it's the third weekday where we've seen forty projects. This is going to be a very fast-paced year if that trend continues. Without a doubt, we are one of the hottest and fastest-growing metro areas in the United States, without a doubt. We can leverage the national focus on this area to help increase occupancy opportunities and the business growth of Shawnee. In fact, we are not isolated from the metropolitan area, we are a prime part of it. We've got a great story to tell, just to tell a little bit more of it. The 2011 workforce mobility study showed that ten thousand Potawatomi County residents left this county every day to develop more accounting to earn their living and to gain a higher paycheck. Those people return to our area each evening, and they spend their incomes here. We aren't going to become a better community someday, we already are a better community. Those who relocate from other parts of the state that are metro area of the nation need to know that they can live here and easily commute to their place of employment, and we're finding well-paying jobs here. To attract them, we need more housing, more housing choices. Increasing the housing selection in Shawnee regardless of the type is an investment in tomorrow with a return for economic base for years to come. Why is this important? Those who gamble every day to acquire homeowners, every day, and they don't need to go to casino to gamble, they're betting their capital on the future growth of the community by starting in the subdivision building spectrum, installing infrastructure. We need to support their continued success. As America continues to age, and it's going to continue to do that, population growth and stability of the population may or will equal employment opportunities. Having more residents living here helps us spread the rise in cost of utilities and the underfunded state and federal mandates. More housing helps us all. In that respect, new homes help keep the value of the fifty homes at a higher value. Since last year, we've been tracking the coverage, we're helping to generate about the community, in local, statewide, and other media publications. Some of those efforts are even reaching the national audience. Decided to reach the local audience with our Monday memo, we feel we need to increase the awareness of Shawnee on a much longer basis. Consistently, the message we share is not about the Shawnee Economic Development Foundation, but about Shawnee and the region, and the great attributes we've got, and why this location has so much software. More awareness of the opportunities in Shawnee means more opportunities for jobs, attraction capital investment. We believe that positive damage for our community is one of the best-savvings tools we can ever have. Obtaining positive need coverage can help position us in a location or proximity next to Oklahoma City metropolitan area, and thus, that's a big deal. Oklahoma City has millions of dollars to spend on the marketing advertising. If we can ride their cocktail and the others have, I think that's a pretty good policy for our community. Having more than one industrial transportation link is a tremendous business differentiator. It helps us lower the cost of our business and let's them be more competitive. The major employers in this community are more than just a paycheck for our citizens. In some cases, they're also even larger utility users. Staying connected to those industries in times of crisis is critical in our opinion. Any urban industry would not be here, and would not survive without a critical rail link, and the industries that seek new locations often also require that railway infrastructure. Supporting or you allowing us to be part of the emergency situations related to utilities, regardless of whether it's weather-related or aging infrastructure, helps us be more business-friendly community. Businesses will stay where they're made to be built, are treated fairly, and have reliable utility sources that they need. In today's world, proof isn't merely in the word of someone, in the data and facts which can be easily validated. It's being able to rapidly supply accurate information that meets a wide variety of client prospects' business needs. Business intelligence is knowing more about ourselves than anybody else knows, and leveraging the assets we have. Collecting the lap of data about land, buildings, developers, workforce, and other demographics having access to allows this community to respond to inquiries faster. Sometimes we only have a couple of days to respond to an inquiry about locating something in Shawnee, and sometimes we don't have seconds to get attention on a website or a blog. In this electronic age, you've got to be quick, or you're just running the game. It isn't easy to have relevant and accurate data, and it doesn't happen on its own, and so ongoing process that must be continually worked on to stay in the game and affect the community. Sometimes it's hard to read. Last year was the first year the city of Shawnee provided us with full funding, and we are extremely grateful for that support. That commitment, along with the reserves of the SEDF, and some funding from the county, has allowed us to develop a strategic plan for retail attraction. That in turn will allow the working consumer choices. Growing the retail base and reducing the retail leakage will help the city with new sources of sales tax collection, which as we all know is greatly needed. We're requesting that the city continue to support us with full funding, which allows us to continue with the retail improvement strategy, and also work on aerospace improvement program, along with potential downtown to SOF program still in works. Economic development isn't easy, it's not inexpensive, it also isn't done in the back end. In our opinion, it's a team effort for resources and leverage and use to create the best scenarios for improving our economic pace. Over the past three years, the Shawnee Economic Development Foundation has been partnering with the city by voluntarily taking a reduction in our funding for two years, providing fifty thousand dollars for the repair of a hangar at the airport, pulled from our own reserve to fund a portion of the retail attractions strategy that's currently underway, and using part of these funds to help increase the awareness of housing in the Shawnee area in over six hundred locations in Oklahoma and a few key locations in California. We believe that we're a great investment for the city and its citizens. As in the past, we have a complete detailed budget, should you care to see it, we're trying not to burn the trees or fog up your internet pipe, so that's something you'd like to see me to have to give that to you. Last slide, Mr. Peterson. We believe that what this measure gets done, and that by measuring our activity and tracking those working, what needs to be realized. While our project numbers, contact numbers, have stayed consistent in the last three years, 2012 has seen a dramatic increase, and why is that important? We can't change the directions, improve, adapt, and react from changing conditions after our chief of track or efforts, but there's nothing to hide, and with everything we've been showing you guys, everything that you'd like to see. We can't answer questions about our programs, activities, or opportunities unless we follow a consistent manner of documentation. These measurement tools are what we call our dashboards, to help us actively engage our efforts, our performance, and help us clearly define our economy, our program, and the benefit of this community. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I conclude my report unless you have some questions.
We had an additional ten pages in our packet, from what you just went over, but some of it was the same or more data about what you just reviewed and planned.
You guys know, we talk, we, we've sent them the zero panel, and so, we send you the annual report, because that's what it is, we track it all year round, let you see what it is, and then when we make our public presentation, we really try to pull back on that, and even pull back when we see it's wrong. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Next, item number ten. Item number ten, Presentation by Finance Director for Audit RFE.
This year, we decided to go up to RFP, Audit Services, and I think we've had the idea only six or seven years, and after five years, we think it's important to go do diligence about and do an RFP, but there's been a lot of changes before I came, so this year we announced, we sent it out on February twenty-third, we sent eight audit requests to Audit and Associates, CBEW Professional Group, Cole and Reed, Yad Bailey, Grant Thornton, Finley and Cook, Phyllis Taylor, and Stanford O'Dell. And we gave them about three weeks, and they needed to be in by March fourteenth of last year. We received five responses, Arlich, CBEW Professional Group, Cole and Reed, Yad Bailey, and Stanford O'Dell. It was a little shocking on the range. They came in, we have not been on a full cap order conference and a financial report in a few years, I think it was 2006, the last time we did one, and I plan to do it this year. They came in from twenty-three to eight to sixty-eight thousand dollars. I reviewed each proposal, went through it, and ranked them. I also asked Proper and Associate Brenda, went through it, and so did Grant Proper, and we called references. Arlich was looked good and had great references, and made, and we still are. So we are going to go with Arlich for the new auditing provision.
Did we emphasize getting our call in on time?
Yes. We didn't delay any RFP to have all the reports, but I said we're looking. We didn't deadline any RFP to have all the reports by episode 15. And that's us doing a lot of the preparation work with the financials and things like that too. And I will leave all of this to proper. So your recommendation is that you're willing to change to this other company, is that the Lopea? Approximately, what are we spending right now?
We spent $30,000.
So we take each one very carefully, and that's why I felt it was important for proper to give it the all.
Were they offered the opportunity to do it?
After 15 years, I mean, the tax office or proper?
Proper is not the audit company, they are actually like financial payoffs. They've had a lot of our financial work, like instead of Oklahoma, the auditors not like companies anymore. So it's proper that it's that for us. And to make sure everything's aligned and all works together. Any questions? Is this an effort?
This is not enough, and I mean, we've been here in Alabama for a hundred years and we've wanted to change it for a couple of years. About one good time, so I should be here and understand the way finance work before we switch. Now we've switched and there's a significant savings here. I've been in on every $50,000 a year, so not only are we saving some money, we're also going to be able to get another firm to look at our books in order to make sure that our citizens are confident that our books are being reviewed periodically by different firms. If they're changing it up every five years, it's a big difference.
Personal audits. Okay, very good. And I guess that we started cruising. You need to do pre-work.
We are ready by the end of July, beginning of July.
Okay. Thank you. Item number 11. Consider resolution approving sale not to exceed $9 million upon the Baptist University authority student housing revenue note of the Baptist University Project Series 2012 and waiving competitive bidding. Do we have a presentation on this?
Thank you, Mayor Castle. I'm John Waldo, BOC. And all the OBUC for Tom Terry and Darian Smith, Art Flute, and Roger Henson are here. And basically, what this is, is Mary Anthony helped me with the law, that if order to have tax exempt bonds, an authority is created, it's not related to the city, an authority is created, in this case, Oklahoma Baptist University Authority. And with the tax exempt status, it has to have a public entity as the beneficiary. So in this case, for the Baptist Authority, it is the city of Shawnee. That's kind of a one-way thing. There's no way that Shawnee does, there's no way that you all guarantee the debt or have any responsibility on the debt. It's just that you are the ultimate beneficiary against something that you're asking for. So that's the reason we're coming to give, because it's a tax exempt audition. Although, just, we did the process, it's very similar to the tax exempt note that we did at the city of Shawnee in December. As you remember, we went out and got competitive bids and got pricing, although it wasn't by state law competition. We probably played competitive bidding. Remember that night, we kind of had a little, we're glad that we did that because we had little changes that were made, same deal happened here. So we did this project, although your proposal, your resolution is $9 million. It simply ends up that we're only going to borrow eight million. There's no reason to change the resolution, so let you know that what you're, it's going to borrow is $8 million. We sent it out to eight banks and First United was the lone bidder and an extremely, what we thought was an extremely low rate, 20-year money at 3.23%. The Oklahoma Baptist University Authority met here in this city council, chambers at 4:00 today and approved that. And then we had what we call a temper hearing for the public. That temper hearing was held at 5:00. So we would highly recommend that you all approve of this. And for any questions? It's, you all know what the project is, the beautiful doors and all that stuff.
And we don't have any liability at stake.
And it's stated in the big package, and this is, this is somewhat common, the banks are used to seeing this. In every issue that we've ever done at Oklahoma Baptist University, it says public letters, it's not responsible to the city of Shawnee. Because we don't want anybody confused to think of the business.
Did we approve the resolution?
I should approve the resolution by Commissioner Samson, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Read the resolution, please.
This is a resolution that mineralizes the circular stamp, like $69 million. I'm Baptist University Authority speaking out the American air. I'm Baptist University Project Series 2012 and waiving competitive bidding.
Okay, call roll, please. Stevens.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Carrick.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Harris. Okay, thank you very much. Item number 12. Consider an ordinance modifying section 3-216 of the Shawnee Municipal Code, preferred from March 19th from the 12th City Commission meeting. This is our signed ordinance.
Well, Jack, I know the term map, most of these places, when you say we can have additional billboards, I think you're going to work on 10 of them.
Yes, Commissioner, based on the ordinance before you, and of course, staff need to modify this based on direction of the commission. But based on the current ordinance, the map that's included in your packet includes the buffering requirements, the dimensional standards for the billboards, 1,000 feet apart, and also a buffer for residential property. And so you'll see those existing billboards indicated by the red dots, the buffering around them, and then the green circle, sir, would be potential areas where some could be signed. You're absolutely correct, most of them are along 177 or along I-40 or course of I-40.
I actually don't have Kevin on I-40.
Yes, that's correct.
Consider that modified.
What happened to the annual licensure required?
After we looked at the data on the condition of the existing billboards, we realized that they were in very good condition and we just thought it was a little onerous on billboard companies to have to do an annual license because there really wasn't, wouldn't be much for us to expect on an annual basis. Also, if you look at the draft ordinance, it's in your pack, or the proposed ordinance, it's in your packet. We're only talking about potential for maybe a dozen additional signs, and so it didn't seem necessary to create this additional administrative process if we were only keeping track of a handful of new signs plus existing signs that are already in good condition. So it was kind of just to balance staff time and then also look at how much it would be on the actual billboard owners themselves.
And the other community, she looked at it right out. At least such fees.
Some did, most of them did not.
Why aren't there any signs, potential, it's like north Kippee, like north of I-40?
Yeah, the reason that they're, north of I-40, there's a section up there that is unresidential, and so that square that you see on North Kippee is kind of limits that further north of there though, beyond the scope of this map, you're probably right. I'm sure there'd be some that would be permissible there, although I think the traffic count at this current state probably wouldn't.
For the current state?
Yeah, for the current state, that probably wouldn't.
And then the edge of the boundary here is about Leo.
Yes, Mayor.
So I actually chose to go with that to begin. Kate Booth is the point, or Kate Booth married to both of us. Are there any additional signs?
That's true, that's true. Based on these standards in the ordinance, there would not be.
Or Allen or Kate Booth's bird, it would be on 177, I mean, why I-40?
Yes, sir. I thought it was interesting as well to look back at the current ordinance that is under the mark for it. It also has states and requirements, although there were significantly less than the draft ordinance or the proposed ordinance before you. It required a residential buffer of 75 feet. Ordinance says 53 feet. And it required buffering between the billboards, anywhere from 250 feet to 750 feet depending upon the size, excuse me, the height of the sign as well as the area size of the sign. And so this ordinance has 1,000 feet between the signs regardless of height or area size.
As more of Kippee goes from residential to commercial south of I-40, is there a potential that in the future, with the reduction of residential, that there's be additional signs?
I think the I-40 buffer is substantial. I don't think it would permit additional signs in that area because, although you do have lots there that could transition from residential to commercial, most of those lots are about 200 feet deep at most, until you get to residential neighborhoods.
And of the zones that are established, you just added C3? Is there an addition? And I thought in your memo, it said something about you added C3, but then when I was reading the ordinance, there's a lot of zoning classifications. And I don't know what it said.
I can verify that. This is, this is gone through, uh, several different iterations as we've gone through this, both the plant commission, the state commission. At one point, we did not permit private signs in the C3 in the draft. However, looking at the potential for additional signs and the fact that they were all relegated to principally north of I-40 along 177, we felt it was fine to be a little bit more flexible in terms of the lab and zoning classification. So that's why we included C3. We maintain the original square footage of the date of 250 feet, although the commission was not fit to, not this ordinance, so that square footage could be increased to be compatible with the larger signs that are already there along I-40 and along 177. Staff have come up with that, that change.
Any other questions?
Give it all passing and move on, like the one you did a second, I might leave it to adopt the ordinance.
So do we need to specify now about the I-40 boards?
No, what I would suggest, Commissioner Harris suggested you can, we can adopt the status as now, we can work on amendments down the road. If the commission wants us to, you can, I believe it's appropriate, make higher amendments as well, and so you could adopt.
I just think we need to address I-40, and I'm glad this takes a promotion, but we can, on the next I-40, from the top, it's the one that they filed. I hope that that is a motion, there's only that, any new signs on I-40. Why don't you leave it as it is and then give a recommendation back from me on the I-40?
And actually, most of I-40 is, most of the signs on I-40 are, then they actually stay right away, we don't govern, and so.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Harris to accept the ordinance as presented, okay? And a second by Commissioner Samson. Any other questions or comments? Okay, call roll, read it first, read the ordinance.
An order denied genomic sister signs in section 3, if given six of the Shawnee Municipal Code, providing for severity and occurring in an emergency.
Call roll now, please. Harris.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
No.
Collier.
Aye.
Question, Harris. All right. I'll leave the, oh. Okay, I know, should I, Commissioner Harris, for the emergency clause? Second, and the second by Vice Mayor Waldo. Call roll, please. Harris.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
No. Except four hours of the night. Actually, three and two. No, two notes. No, that was one. I just wanted to, it either grant for emergency sales.
All right. The one, the one that was back up last month.
No, sorry, yeah, third location. Okay, item number 13. Acknowledged sales tax report received April 2012.
Boy, I didn't think April was $106,000 from the previous year. With the sale being $100,000 over, we were right just above budget when projected as to April. And we received $1,417,533,000, and compared to 2010, figures we're up $100,000.
And how much over, that was over 2009?
19.
19, okay, okay.
And over what our budget, what we budgeted through April, was $100,000.
Do you think, do you think there's anything that would probably put it on I-40? Like show up this time or follow up on that?
I have full reports on seeing, Harris. I have, I have like the top 25 retailers, so when I just, when I just have my, you know, that's not, compared to.
I was surprised at the, our, that's got most of small channels around us were up. How soon that's because of gasoline prices and people are buying, you know, instead of driving down there. Buying more, I'm just paying $4 a gallon for gasoline, kind of shocked, so I was surprised.
No, we've had other lines where everyone else around us is up. Have you found any reasons for?
I've talked to the tax mission once, and I need to make an appointment, I want to go there and talk to them about our taxes. Calls, the big boxes, they do an average, so I think it's all start with the catch-up.
Okay. It's an estimate versus an actual.
Right.
Right. That's good news.
That is, yeah.
Okay. Item number 14. A, consider minutes, converting supply cabin chassis to woodland firing, firefighting apparatus, I'm sorry. Okay.
What is, what are we talking about?
He said brush pump?
Other lights known as converting a brush pumper truck. Or a truck to be a brush pumper.
I've seen a lot of times, we do, you know, the, we want to pick it away, we want to, as an example, one of the things that you're asking about. A lot of the agencies now already say that if somebody arrives in the back of the truck and sprays the fire as they drive through the woods, I should ask following best practice, they drive through the woods, they spray, next thing you know, it's burned back up. Then for doing it, and I could mention the fact that the agencies have firefighters in the back of the truck. The kind of specs that actually equip it, we think we want for the, for the, the.
Oh, this is for converting, we have a cabin chassis that we block, they did, and this will be converted to a cabin chassis, a little supply. They make it back, they do a bracketing, a bottom line firefight. They don't get one bid, it's for life, fire safety, I saw a lot of cancers for. Uh, they don't get one, one bid, it's for life's, uh, fire safety on Solana campus, for sixty-four thousand, one hundred eighty-one dollars. And fifty dollars would request a, just a very action for the.
For this, right, for the car, for the.
We, we pay about thirty thousand for the cabin chassis.
Some, I think, uh, yes, sir. Down one ton or?
It is, it's, uh, it's a, it's a, we're trying to keep it, uh, we got a committee that works on it, so we're trying to get away from the diesel, kind of keep the gas, get out of the room, keep it light. Get as much equipment as we can, so.
So this is a replacement?
Yes, my, it is a replacement, it's about, about twelve years old.
One that was designed by the, um, department, do you know?
That one, that one, we moved away from that. That, that one was. We designed it. We're looking for packages, uh.
Still fit our need, yeah.
Yes.
And that's all, please, or any specific parts?
We, we purchased one this way, the last one, plus we bought two thousand eight, this is from another manufacturer. Uh, we got a little specific on the bid this time, it is the order please, the bid finished. The package we like, this is kind of similar to the, we got the last ones, sort of looking at it, might, might go to the truck, but the order please, compared to what they did, we have to spend a lot of time on that, to fix things. So we try to get permission to, to do this.
That's pretty easy to arrive, survive. That's not fair. We're trying to, we're trying to. Need to defer, defer, defer.
All right, motion to defer, um, by Commissioner Stevens and a second by Commissioner Hare, if they can, our next meeting. Call roll, please. Stevens?
Aye.
Hare?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Sprint this week here against June thirty, we went to arbitration, there were three issues. Uh, we did arbitration agreement on a number of, of other issues, um, some clerical, some of them, um, financial, um, some of the mysterious policies. Uh, the three issues that went to arbitration involved sick and emergency money, uh, the scheduling of bags off, and, uh, the adjustments to pay plan. Uh, the arbitrator was John Bernard, who's from Texas. Uh, we were on kind of time crunch under the law, it's the arbitration panel had really favored, uh, the union, the city would have the right to, to vote the people which offered to take, um, our deadline for getting that election called and to vote people as honest, so that it would be the June twenty-sixth election, um, and there's some of you will not agree with it. So we would have needed to get that resolved here in double E. So we had an expedited briefing scheduled. Uh, Margaret Love was arbitration counsel to the city. Uh, obviously the city's representative to arbitration panel, and Chris Truitt, who's a detective in Edmond Police Department, was the attorney representing. Uh, Mr. Truitt and I talked with Mr. Bernard this morning on telephone, and he read his award to us and then faxed it, it's handwritten. He let us know early on, he didn't even do email, so he's, he's not high tech at all. Uh, he will be sending us a more formal award, uh, when he gets back from, let's make sure that his wife gets it back. So, so we have signed the written award that's in front of you. He did find in favor, uh, of the city's position, uh, by operation of law, that becomes the contract. Uh, there's no further action to be taken by anybody for the arbitrage board panel. It's final, it takes two votes, obviously I agree with his, his findings, so that means, uh, two votes. So that becomes the contract for remainder of this year. Um, it will mean, uh, some, um, checks being written to members of the bargaining unit. You can read and state of your uniform allowance, um, as part of the agreement, so we will now be writing the manual, having some backpacking. The total, uh, economic package of the city's last best offer is about three percent, I think it's three point one perhaps. That was to, uh, it defends the steps, it's a one and a half percent color, and then incentive pay for field training officers. So the union's, uh, total proposal was more than a quarter, about four point six percent. Three percent color, uh, the steps and the field training officers. So that's, that's the end of that, we're starting our meetings now for the next fiscal year and, uh, hope you can resolve. Questions?
Very good, thank you very much. Other initiatives or words?
Two others, we have to, we have to talk for this, I think they do. And I wonder if you weren't there this morning, and you and I have.
Well, our fifth annual, uh, U aviation adventures will be held this Saturday at the Cooper Aviation Campus. We have, we have a special speaker this year, Commander John Harrington, uh, has, the commander of astronauts, excuse me, a space mission, space shuttle. And he was first made American to walk in space and to, to, uh, fly on the spaceship. So, uh, he's going to be speaking at the Hoshawen, and he's hopefully inspiring him to pursue a career in aviation.
What time is it starting?
It starts at eight thirty and ends at three o'clock.
When's he, when's he gonna?
It'll be at Hoshawen. Probably about eleven thirty, seven thirty.
Questions each year. I'll draw from the community that's ready. In fact, we looked at the registrants for U Aviation Day, the majority of the people that already signed up are not from Hoshawen. They're coming in from Oklahoma City, they're coming in from Craig, they're coming in from Seminole. So we're showcasing our airport and our aviation technology right here in Hoshawen on Saturday, the weather's supposed to be really nice. It's grown every same year since we started.
Wow, and how many are we expecting this year?
Probably over two. Girl scout, boy scout, getting air badges and aviation, something that, you know, a lot of times is not a reach for, for our kids, uh, they don't get interaction with aviation, so, scary as that.
Straight progress.
We get a photograph date on it, run line.
It's, it's progressing, uh, the weather's slowing us up a little bit, but, uh, the portion that is being, portion in Norway is, is totally removed. Uh, the, uh, subgrade has been stabilized, there's rock bases in place, and this week they should start putting down asphalt for that portion. And then, from that point on, it'll be circling overlay, repainting the entire, and doing some work everywhere.
Is that on the sound?
That's on the sound. And we're also beginning to, uh, help, help the aviation.
So it's still on schedule, is it completed?
Yeah.
July?
Probably May July. But, uh, we, we have a big contractor, a, 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 engineer firm, Stephen and I, so, it's, it's going.
Thank you.
Then, then you can talk about trash off Saturday.
And Broadside Saturday, Paris. Always have Broadside, we're all great.
Yeah, uh, this, uh, trash off day is, is, uh, part of the, the, uh, American, Great American cleanup. It's also part of the boat dock, uh, they do this trash off every year at the same time. And, uh, I just want to make sure that everybody was where, it's this Saturday, uh, and I may am at Kids Space Park, and I'll have a dumpster out there. And participants just need to show up, sign up, and, uh, we provide the trash bags and the safety vests. We do have a list of streets that, that we'd like cleaned up, but we're not hoping everybody to see that. Uh, you know, I know other people, they, they walk and do things in other certain areas, and, uh, I'm, I'm even more happy walking into those areas. I will be providing coffee and doughnuts for those that show up. And, um, there are street trucks that will be giving out for, for some participants. Uh, one would be for the largest group that participates, uh, one for the, the oldest participant, and the other one for the most unusual, is cash.
So if a citizen just wanted to help, they could show up at nine o'clock at Kids Space Park on Saturday.
Sure.
I had a question about that day, very good.
Uh, and I did leave a flyer in the O S L box, so, I told you all, have one of those, and it's been nine to one, and it's waiting at one o'clock.
Thank you, James.
Hello, may I let you through, our focus here?
Okay. Item number seventeen, commissioners' comments?
Have, uh, we started on the lineup for the budget period, stuff like that, otherwise, uh, priorities and things, or y'all want to start on that or something?
Tune in, we need to, probably, heading out for probably about a month. Um, capital we've been working on, we've been working on, maintenance operations, we, we're well into.
Probably take into consideration the communications tower in my home, but very important, so it was my top priority, it's very good.
We're meeting, that's something else I should have to, um, when we met a week ago, with, uh, commissioners and citizens, we talked about those two items. The communications tower discussion, I have to know that next Monday night. I'm hopeful that we will have other users of our communication system step up to the plate and agree to help finance the, uh, I think there's a lot of, um, misinformation, but I think we need to, to meet together next Monday night is what we're scheduled to do, we originally were going to do it at the X, but X has got an RV ground that's going to take up every inch of space out there, so we're going to do it at Golden Cooper Technology Center next Monday night. It's very, in partnership with the city, uh, we become a commission. Um, it'll be, it'll be a joint meeting between us, and, and I'll be putting together the agenda for discussion purposes. I'll provide some more information about the, the holographic phone communication system. Uh, commissioners have, have laid the, the pool priorities to us. Um, you know, it's, it's with, with the death of the levers in December and putting a large chunk toward that pool for next spring. It's going to really put a, put a dent in the city budget for the pool, but yes, sir, that's mission, uh, and the citizens probably, we will be working towards that.
My comment doesn't matter if I possibly afford it or trust or whatever it is, because I understand you're probably on two, even two years from now, you know, I'm shaming. So, I don't, I don't want to think about it tonight, but I thought that it would be, the total project, that probably going to continue or attaching or something like that.
Where are we on the staff, uh, salary review?
Um, getting back to, like, why you should have talent, I mean.
Just wondering, would you, can you guys, we'll see that.
Um, I hope you can, uh, for the next mission.
And also I've had, um, continuing comments about homeless downtown, and especially in terms of library, is that something that SNAP is working on also?
Yes, um, as part of the reconcetation, one of the things that we want to look at is, um, improving our handling of that situation. However, I want everyone to understand that's a very complex issue, it's not necessarily something that's solved by laws. The fact that we're talking about public mobility makes it more complicated, not less. But we, uh, have asked for advice from municipal code corporations, which is the leading compiler of municipal codes in the United States. Uh, they've given us some information, we'll be doing, uh, some research into that. I, I'm currently meeting at least once a week with the department head and, um, pulling things together for each department. We're probably ninety days from having anything for you to look at. Um, but it's, I don't care where you go in the United States, I don't care where. Whether in Washington DC, Union City, Oklahoma City, uh, Los Angeles, San Francisco, you will see people who have chosen, um, to live on the streets. And, um, to sometimes be in shelters and sometimes, um, be somewhere else. So it, it's a community problem, we'll look to see what tools we can bring from there from a legal point of view, but it's not as simple as just taking somebody off the right way out of the law. But we are open.
Okay, thank you.
I'm very programing on Oklahoma City, I think, and I, I'm not, you know, advocating about so many things, we're very successful in locating our people in one place and so forth, and I don't, that's all I know.
One, one of the things that they have done, first they started back in the seventies, they basically toured and then re-prolongated. And then, but they, they've spent many years, um, working with all the social service agencies, the state agency, the private sector, and various charities around town, consolidating services to a particular area, somewhat west of downtown. And that helps because people want to be where the resources are. Um, we're not going to be in that situation, and, um, our resources are spread across downtown, so that means folks are walking through downtown, uh, to get in one place to head up. But we can certainly look at, that's one of the things we'll be looking at, is how to, how to, um, make all that work better for everybody.
Notice that the rescue mission had gotten a significant grant for renovation. And, um, I know that certain one of their thought processes, uh, was to add some beds for, uh, these folks. Maybe it's going to start again, I'm interested in circumlocating their, it's not currently signed for that use. Has there been any discussion, or I think, you know, as part of this discussion, we need to be very optimistic about the direction we're going in. Um, s- s- see what their thoughts are, and not spend a lot of money on something that, that I couldn't support.
One of, one of the things that we'll need to do, uh, in revising, uh, the ordinance is, is to make a certain number of findings, uh, factual findings. And to do that, we're going to need to work with, um, the other, the other, um, stakeholders, if you will. Um, the services agencies and the shelters and so forth. Um, so, um, that's part of the discussion that we're going to have.
More specifically, I think, have we had any conversation or meeting session with them concerning their renovation?
Uh, no, sir, not since the, uh, the transfer of property. Part of that, we got contact with, um, contacts activity as well as their official firm, they've used a group of projects. There was one time working on, on a plant, uh, a, a, a middle floor, uh, for sheltering. But this time I, I'm not, I'm not quite up to that status or the time.
I'd encourage staff to talk to them, let's get that brought forward for their, as well, I understand.
Uh, yeah, I wanted to talk, and I'm going to be calling you out, but I'm really concerned about, uh, in light of dispatch weekend, so, have we made any progress about finding any other alternatives in places, um, for shelters as well?
As my official documents, first manager director, we, uh, I have obtained a list, a little research into the fallout center list that we have back in the sixties, hundreds of seventies, which did five hundred replacements, uh, in buildings in Hoshawen. And so we're going to be going through that list, making some contacts. Of course, this last week was primarily concentrating on getting everybody ready for, getting everybody ready for shelter, but we have existed, so we have made any contact with those. We, we do have the list, we can start making some contacts, and hopefully we'll have some good news, you know, that's part of that. I did know that there was some, uh, some changes to the law, it'll be coming forward in a few months, uh, in terms of, uh, liability protection. The government assigned some, and they have some, um, on record now, so that, that's in the post effect, that would be, hopefully some incentives that will help as well, so. We are continuing to work on that, which, again, we're concentrating a lot this week on getting ready for the, for that, um, weather that we have this weekend, fortunately. Um, we had, we had the shelters open, uh, this weekend, and we had the events on Friday evening, we did, we had them open, ready to open, uh, Saturday afternoon, and didn't have to do that overnight. Uh, but they were available, we had several lock-ins, um, in all shelters, Friday afternoon. What did you do around the P P?
I did notice, uh, just watching the tracking of the storms that.
that there were many communities that had none of the public storm shelters. They were announcing the hot season.
You mentioned, or are you going to do that about the, or is it?
Commissioner, uh, Harris, he sent me an email Sunday, the, the issue came up in Woodward about the, the failure of the community warning devices because of our power there. We have, uh, fifteen devices in Shawnee that are operated by battery. They operate off a battery and the commercial power is recharged as a battery. So, we can sound those, and we don't have to, uh, rely on commercial power being in place to activate those. We have additional six of the older devices that we're converting over. We've been working through the budget process, one or two a year, to make that conversion from telephone line control to radio control. So, we're not dependent on commercial power. And, and the telephone line is being up and operating to activate those devices. So, we are continuing to make that cut over to, uh, radio control and battery operation. But for the majority of them, they're still considered, they are on battery operation.
And how many of those do we have? I mean, how many total sirens do we have?
Twenty-one.
And what do you say, maybe six that are?
Yeah, yeah, six if they are still telephone line, it's all over the old relay system that we need to convert over. But we're happy to do that anyway. In addition to the fact that they were put in that during the sixties, we have to, to rewire them. Now, they've been out, you know, forty years and attached to the weather, and, and so, and they're reworking, so it does provide us the opportunity to, like, the battery operated at that time as well as radio control. Uh, as the city continues to grow, uh, we're going to need to look at that, but in the future, this is one of the things that we've added to our hazard mitigation plan project list. Uh, that we had also put into the, the, the projection for capital outline needs in the next ten, fifteen, twenty years, about forty-two year, uh, last year. About additional of those, of those community warning devices in other parts of the city as we continue to grow, we'll need to add those devices out there.
What's the value of one, our?
The electronic mechanical sirens that we have, uh, today are about, uh, twelve and fifteen thousand dollars apiece. Uh, if you go to an electronic siren, like, uh, a number of cities do, which you can do multiple times, you can do public address, and you're probably going up to the neighborhood of twenty to twenty-five thousand apiece. Uh, the electric, the, the electronic mechanical are, for the most part, are, are good because again, much of what you want to do with a siren sound, it means to seek shelter and seek additional information. Uh, people get confused between those, that's the flood warning sirens, that's the all clear sirens, that's tornado warning sirens. And so, we made it just very clear, when, when we activate the outdoor warning devices, it means take cover and seek additional information. We do not do all clear, and we do not do anything else.
What triggers, uh?
The activation of it, yes. Um, good question. Uh, anytime a tornado warning is issued by the National Weather Service for a storm that is impacting or approaching Shawnee, it's an automatic activation. It's also an automatic activation of Blackwood Connect, uh, system. We have spotters, uh, that we put out, and, and as we did this past Friday, um, checking the, the storms that are attracted, we see them on radar. And so, anytime we have a spotter that sees a tornado, a thundercloud, or persistently rotating wall cloud approaching soon to Shawnee, that would trigger the activation. Anytime we receive a report from a credible source, that could be a media transponder, uh, another spotter from our chaser from another community that we know about, uh, law enforcement officer, any other, uh, emergency services official that's been trained in that, where they make a report of a persistently rotating wall cloud, tornado, thunder, that activates automatically the activation of that as well.
So, we kind of follow up question that asked is, if, if that's what we're going by, these radio, weather radios, if, if you, everyone else, if the citizens should buy, what triggers those as opposed to what you refer to?
Uh, the, the National Weather Service active, uh, issued the tornado warning. Generally, what happens, uh, in that case is if, if we're seeing something that the National Weather Service may not have warned on yet, when we activate the community warning devices, we're contacting the National Weather Service, and they follow that up with the actual tornado warning. So, there may be, you know, a thirty second to a minute delay between the two devices there.
But what they're good about where we're hiding and quickly steal is really crucial.
It was, uh, it is very dangerous, and I talked, when we knew Saturday night, storm was going to be, the storm was going to be well after dark. Uh, we talked with our spotters about that. It's very dangerous to have spotters out at that time of night, uh, because it's very difficult to see the tornado. Again, you're looking for, uh, the lightning to illuminate the background, so as you can see, there's something different there. Or you're looking for power flashes, which are a good indicator that there's something on the ground there as well, so you can see, uh, that. And of course, yes, uh, being right after midnight, a lot of people, uh, in their homes, uh, some people still out because of the prom parties and that kind of thing. It is very crucial. It becomes a lot, lot harder to detect a tornado visually at that point. But the Weather Service has always been good about issuing warnings based upon radar, uh, signatures as well. So, there may not actually have been, or could be a tornado on the ground when they went ahead and issued a warning because, uh, the radar indicates that there's a, well, a big tornado in that area. So, we do try to get as much warning as possible. Again, that's not a very, uh, depending upon circumstances and where you are relating, related to, you know, whether storm is when the warning is issued. But for the, the longer track storms, you know, you might get thirteen to fifteen minutes warning in advance. That's kind of where we were on Friday afternoon on ours. We knew when, when, if Norman was coming this away, and the Weather Service issued the warning for us, when the storm was at Pink, just coming across the, the candle line, uh, again, a storm indicating possible tornado development near Pink moving northeast, we triggered the, the activation of the alarms. Again, we were somewhere, they were about thirteen minutes before our first actual touchdown. A gun load and, uh, just sat in there.
What's the timing on these six units that need to be upgraded?
Uh, we're going to put in for probably two this next year, uh, and just do two, two, and two to finish them all out.
But in light of the, we're not encouraging you to do all six.
I, I don't mind doing that, and we will put in all six.
Very nominal cost for the big scale of things.
Absolutely.
Would you say seventeen thousand?
No, 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 less than that for the radio control. Radio, to convert them over to radio control, we're talking about, uh, four thousand dollars.
Get, get them all in, go to your proposal this year. Second question, has the school reconsidered the use of spotty or any other facilities for?
Uh, not to my knowledge at this point. I do have a note on my desk to contact the superintendent, but we'll be.
Okay. We hear that that needs to be done.
We'll, we'll visit with him about that.
And one last question, if one siren is all hall twenty-one, go on.
Correct. It's always all or nothing.
It's not an area.
Because, uh, again, um, the weather conditions are such that, while there may be something actually developing, working over here, there may be another one developed close by. So, we want to do more in the entire community, uh, to, to take shelter and seek additional information.
I was listening to the news about Woodward today, and, and they were saying that these outside sirens are annoying to have to hear if you're outside.
That's correct.
But if you're at home, asleep in bed, you may or may not.
With the air conditioning on, house buttoned up, uh, you may or may not get it, which is why, again, we encourage everybody to get a weather radio. Uh, and they, you can attach devices to those with a radio that when they alarm, they can flash the lights in your house, or they can activate the, uh, vibration device that you put on your pillow, so that people who are, uh, carrying a pair with those that there's an alert to get up and, and check on the alert and see what that is. It, it, the devices, the, the, the little radios, there are three or four standard manufacturers that you can buy, those devices at Walmart, Kmart, uh, Homeland, in Shawnee, Radio Shack, uh, electronic stores, generally all the electronic stores in the city carry those, or you can order them online. And all, the price point for all of those is about thirty bucks apiece. Something that, that is affordable, viable, probably, to see everyone.
And that, that's the kind that will turn your life on and off.
They have, they have, you have the ability, that's an add-on feature, you have that additional, but the weather radio itself is about thirty bucks. Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Commissioner? All right. All right. Love your time, Commissioner. All right. Second by Commissioner Smith. Call roll, please. Harris?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Simmons?
Aye.
Pearson?
Aye.
Thank you. I'll open up the Shawnee Municipal Authority Meeting, April sixteenth, twenty twelve. We have a forum. Item number one is consider approval of consent agenda. Motion to approve by Commissioner Sims. Second by Vice Mayor Collier. You got it? I'll roll, please. Simmons?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harris?
Aye.
Pearson?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number two, new business?
Yeah, we have a new business, I'm not sure if it wants to say.
Motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
Paid by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll, please. Simmons?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Harris?
Aye.
Pearson? Aye. Open up the meeting for the Shawnee Airport Authority, April sixteenth, twenty twelve. We have a forum. Item number one is consider approval of consent agenda. Motion to approve by Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
Second by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll, please. Simmons?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harris?
Aye.
Pearson? Aye. Item number two, new business?
Yeah, we have a new business, I'm not sure if it wants to say.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Sims. Second by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll, please. Simmons?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Harris?
Aye.
We are adjourned.